I was praying. Your grace, our father, thank you for another day. Thank you for all the new blessings for us. Lord, I pray that you'll be with the sick and be with Jimmy at the times he's going through now and bring him, heal him to your will, Lord, be with him and his family as he goes through the time of trying. Lord, I pray that you'll be with all the militaries overseas fighting and protecting for us for our freedom. Be with leaders of this country, Lord, that look to you for guidance, be with us as we can do business here, that we look to you in the best interest to do what is right by you. Your precious name is great. Thank you.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I mean, the issue is we don't have a badge out of the door. We don't have one.
He said the name now.
Huh?
He said, yeah.
When you say it was that night 2019, I kind of know that it was that night 2019. But if it's just a matter of which we knew that side, it may be. I just thought it was happening, we were doing the news. I thought this was on the way out.
That's what I'm asking. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 18, 2019 Winfield City Council meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the May 21st, 2019 meeting. If anybody got any questions or comments, how to amend this vote, I need to ask for a motion to approve your meeting.
Motion.
Chris, motion in session. Tim, say all in favor. Next item on the agenda is results of public hearing of CGBG application approved of resolution number 1243. Is the application? Has anybody got any? Nobody has any reserve for us doing an application, I need to ask for a motion to approve that to go forward with this, authorizing this application for this grant for this Carter State Favoring Project. Just in motion in session.
Session.
Oh, in favor. That is resolution number 1243. I need the next item on the, which is on the same item as the 12, 12, resolution number 1244, which is the max part of it, which I compute was fifty thousand three hundred. I need to ask for a motion to approve our part of that four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar grant, which is fifty thousand three hundred dollars.
Motion.
All in favor. Maybe we'll get that done this time. There's a lot more traffic in there than you think, though, where the crew goes in there. The next item on the agenda is a charter franchise resolution, number 1245. Have y'all, if y'all looked at this, have y'all got a copy of the previous franchise agreement? You got it? You can see the date. I see if you can find the date. Which thing is assigned to the issue of being voted out?
It's on sale in March.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is the purchase agreement. That sets the franchise agreement with the city of Winfield, that's what the assignment is. This is their, this is when the purchase agreement between West Alabama and then. Nothing to do with our, our franchise agreement. All we're doing, all we're doing is whatever franchise agreement we've got with West Alabama TV cable, we're assigning it to Spectrum Southeast Gas LLC. We're just assigning it over to them because they're purchasing it. So whatever's left on that franchise agreement, how many years are left on it, it's what matters. But my opinion was the franchise agreement was expired.
In May. Three, three-year agreement.
Yeah, three years.
Yeah, we went three.
That's, that's, you know. I just want to draw down that, I just want to move the items when I can tell them to
Mike, have you got, have you got the signed franchise agreement handles?
You probably got the original in council minutes. I'll have a copy.
Because it's two different issues.
You need to discuss it. We need to, we need to actually discuss it. Are you on the first?
Well, as far as negotiating a franchise agreement with either our existing cable provider or the purchaser of our existing cable provider, that needs to be done in executive session because that's the negotiating of a rate.
What I'm, the way I've come upon this, the way I see this is going to have to happen, if we're going to do it tonight.
Yeah.
This, tell me the way this is going to happen. She took my, my resolution. Let me see that resolution. Did you take my copy of that resolution? No, here it is. See, this, this part can't be improved no more. It's got to be between us and them. You see what I'm saying? We don't have, we don't have the franchise agreement with them, we have it with them. We don't have one in place.
Yeah, I understand that. What I'm saying is, by law, by law, we have to approve the assignment of a franchise agreement from West Alabama to Spectrum on the purchase. Spectrum purchases it. The real issue for me, Mayor, is I've been informed that we don't have
Because it's out.
A current franchise agreement with West Alabama to assign to Spectrum.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We don't, we have to, we have to act on doing that first to win the franchise agreement and then act on the resolution.
We can, correct, we cannot assign a franchise agreement to Spectrum if we don't have one with West Alabama at this point in time.
Correct.
And what I'm hearing you say is that West Alabama thinks that there is, that there's still two years left on the franchise agreement.
A year.
A year left on the franchise agreement, existing franchise agreement, but what I'm hearing the city say is that the franchise agreement that we had with West Alabama ended May of this year, 2019. So if we don't have an active franchise agreement, we can't assign it.
Correct.
And that's what I've been dealing with, under the assumption that we don't have a, a, a current franchise agreement, that we've got to negotiate a franchise agreement with West Alabama before we can assign it to Spectrum.
Right. Or, the only way to act to that is to accept, to agree to accept the franchise agreement that we've got, that we have.
To just extend the franchise agreement that we've got in place now, extend it for another two years or whatever, but I did see something in there, in the paperwork, Mike, in a letter, that there was a representation that there was a minimum of thirty-six months left on the franchise agreement. And if we extend it for only two years, that's twenty-four months. One of the, one of the documents from Spectrum that was sent to me shows some paperwork where, where they were under the assumption that there was another thirty-six months left on the existing franchise agreement. Because there's a provision here, it says the recitals of the agreement, and one of the recitals of the agreement was there was thirty-six, that they would assign a franchise of, of agreement, a valid franchise agreement of at least thirty-six months to the purchaser. Where's that other package? They had the agreements with them, that's it, I believe it's in there.
Do you, I understand what we're talking about. Let me bring you up speed a little bit. West Alabama TV cable is, is being purchased by Spectrum.
Which is a subsidiary of Charter.
Right, Charter.
Charter.
We have, we've had, we keep a franchise agreement in place with, with cable companies and electric companies. Normally it's a five-year, but the previous administration in 2016 chose to do a three-year contract with West Alabama TV cable, to look at it again and see, see if we were going to be in that agreement. That agreement run out May, in May, May the third of this year, 2019. This charter needs a resolution stating to the fact that, that, that agreement, that franchise agreement will go to them when they buy West Alabama TV cable, but it's run out. So where we're at, to, where we're at now, tonight, is we don't have an agreement with anybody because it's run out with West Alabama or Charter. We've been asked by West Alabama to pass this resolution stating to the fact that this agreement will go to Charter that they had with us, but there's not one that's run out. Which, what I suggest that we do is to, we can see, because we can negotiate, we're going to have to negotiate an agreement with the new owner. The new owner has not, is not the new owner yet. By that being said, I'm, I recommend that we do a two-year extension to the agreement that we have, franchise agreement that we have right now with West Alabama TV cable. By doing that, we can pass this resolution that Charter's asking, stating to the fact that the agreement, the franchise agreement that we got with West Alabama will transfer to them.
Will it proceed back to the city they assign as they are currently?
Correct. By that agreement. We had, we had a firm that we used in 2016 to audit and look and see that everything was like it should be for us, what we're being paid by the agreement, and everything passed, everything. He chose for three years to look at it. But now, in that three-year period, West Alabama let's sell into Charter, so we're going to have to negotiate an agreement with Charter, but they will have, will have two years to do it, if we extend this.
This is for September, I'm thinking, last year, just going back to 2019. And so, two years is, I mean, they were filed, two years for.
Two years.
And the reason, and the reason I said, what I said to you earlier in the text was seven point eight terms of cable franchises, as a closing date, each franchise will have a remaining term of no less than thirty-six months. That's what I highlighted, sent to you.
And then, I'm telling you more, he, it may be that he thinks there's a year left, if there's not, I mean, it's expired, it's savings, that it's expired, and if you've got a year left, you do it for twenty-four, that's thirty-six.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, and then there was a provision, there was a provision also, it says the franchise authority confirms that the franchise is valid and outstanding and in full force and effect, and there are no defaults under the franchise. Well, my concern, my concern with us going forward on that at that time, Mayor, was that, I was, I was over the understanding that we don't have a valid franchise, I do it expire, and so it's really, it was really something that we.
And you're on the right of something.
Okay. I thought, I thought that's what it was.
May, May the third, 2019.
Okay. So we just need to extend, we just need to renew the existing cable franchise, West Alabama TV cable, twenty-four months, as is written, just like we got named, just two years. And that's going to be, and then once we do that, then we do the, the resolution. Okay.
That'd make it straight, we better put it like it's supposed to be. But we'll have agreement to authorize the transfer.
Okay, well, if, 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 if that needs to be done in the next meeting, with their timeframe, what we can do is we can make a motion in session, and to renew the existing franchise as written for an additional two years. So that gives them the two-year franchise agreement, and then after we do that, then adopt that resolution that assigns that franchise to Spectrum under this, and that means in two more years Spectrum's going to have to negotiate a franchise with us.
I've already, I've already made them aware, they need to go ahead and be working on it.
Okay. Is everybody on it?
They won't be on negotiations until two years.
They're getting the assignment of the existing franchise, yeah.
I think they, they, they can still come to negotiate, they can go ahead and start the negotiations, and it is, they'll, we'll have to, we'll have to have our negotiation done within two years. You see what I'm saying, they can go ahead and come to us, they can go ahead and start a negotiation process.
But the, the terms of their.
Paying two years of what we already got.
Yeah, yeah. Their franchise payments will be the same as they are for West Alabama TV cable for two years, there'll be the exact same, there'll be no change in franchise payment.
So do you want me to amend the agenda to ask to do that?
We need to, to, to.
I need to ask to amend the agenda to put, to put before you, to franchise agreement extension with West Alabama TV cable.
Two-year extension.
Two-year extension.
Motion.
Need to ask for a second.
I'll see.
All in favor. Back to the charter franchise resolution, number 1245, I need to recommend that the city pass this resolution authorizing the franchise agreement to go forward with the sale from West Alabama to Charter, that this franchise agreement go with Charter at the date of sale for a period of two years, twenty-four months.
Mike, did he think it was five, like the last one? Is that what he was confused about? Kyle, did he think we had five?
I'm not going wild in the discussion.
I figured that's what it was, it went from five to three, and he, he was thinking he had ten more years on it.
I need to, I need, I'm going to swap four and five, I'm going to move four and five around. Has anybody got any old business? Can I do that? I'll put it, I'll do it. Go ahead, Chris.
Have you had a chance to speak with the hospital owner?
I don't know if you, based on that, what has transpired, I kind of knew that was kind of in the works. But we, I'm going to set a meeting with new administrator to bring him up to speed, I'm going to let him get his hands around everything, where he can be exactly with the numbers and stuff that you want. He's been here before, the one we put in place, but yeah, I've been, I've already been speaking with him before October went on, that we need to have that meet, toward answering the questions that you got, that the council may have for us, how operations is going with the hospital, that's, that's a pretty big instance that's happened this past week.
Anything possibly within the month?
It'd be, it'd be within this next council meeting.
What's the, what's the procedures of putting letters on people's doors about their property? What's the city's procedures, and how they go about that?
We've got an ordinance, a weed and litter ordinance, Sammy's got probably, she can probably elaborate a little bit on how we handle weed and litter ordinance, because it's all kind of, the weed and litter deal is the biggest issue, I think, that we have with the letters go. I know I got one, one of my places up here last year, because the grass was too high.
Since Rob is the street department supervisor, he started reporting a lot of, well, not just with business license, like people in town, he says that they don't have a business license, he also sees the properties and the condition of the property, so we created a forum for him just to post on people's doors if he sees something that needs to be taken care of, and then the letter tells him to contact city hall. It does have his signature on it, as the street department supervisor, whether it's weeds, whether it's litter in the yard, whether the dogs have strove, or whether it be junk vehicles, they're all kind of specified, so it kind of helps me because I can't get out and actually see everything that's going on, so you guys.
Well, my, my thing is, is I feel like as a city as a whole, if we're going to do one, we need to do all. Because to be honest with you, I have several people calling me, I don't know how everybody else does, but I have several people calling me, because they get a letter and then they start naming names about other people. And I, myself, if we're going to put a letter on anybody's door, we need to put a letter on everybody's, that needs to.
I think a lot of times, or a lot of times, where it may be a little different, a little bit different situation is, is they've got, we've also got a, a community action form. That's not the same form, that's not the same way or the same form that she's talking about. A community action form is where somebody comes in and actually files a complaint.
I understand.
And then we handle it kind of the same way with that, with sending an officer usually with that complaint form, but it.
But, I mean, my opinion is, if we're going to do for one, we need to do.
I don't think it's picking and choosing, a lot of times people, people feel like they've been chosen out because of differences with that person or whoever who left the letter or whatever, but I don't per se, I don't mean it's one of my business, you've had, you've had, it's been brought up by Chris before, it's been brought up by Jimmy before, and you know, it is my business, I mean, that's what it is. You know, if it comes to the point where the council's going to take action toward me, I mean, that's, 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 and that's the way it'll have to be. But I don't think that the people in the police department, or the people in the street department, or Allen or the fire department, I don't think they're picking and choosing particular people.
I'm not, I'm not.
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, you're saying you're getting tons of calls and people calling, people calling because they got a letter, okay?
No, I'm saying people are getting a letter and they're complaining, they're complaining, they're saying their property's not, and they'll say, if you looked at so-and-so, I don't do that, and I'm not calling saying Robin is handpicking, I'm saying as a whole with the city, we need to, if we're going to put one letter out, we need to put a letter on everybody's, not, we don't need to put it on one person or two people or whatever, we just, we need to go around and make, and make a list and send a letter to every single one of them people.
That's what, I mean, back to what I was saying, that's what we're doing. Now, if they some, how's, how's that person that has told you that they've got a letter and they think that they got one that everybody else, that is in violation of the grass or weed or litter or whatever, how they know they haven't got a letter?
They didn't know, I don't know if they got.
They don't know that they've got a letter.
I mean.
What I'm saying is, 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 they're not picking and choosing, if they see an area, just like the one that the other person got, I got, I've got a piece of property up here that I got a letter on last year, I had, I had the, the grass and, I got, I got a letter, it was stuck on the door. I don't really think, a lot of times they, when the letter's stuck there, they're not really, they may know or may not know who actually owns it now, because property switches hands or whatever, and I don't think they're picking and choosing particular ones. I think that the letters is going, it's just like we've got a house in Meadowwood that's received a letter two or three times, we've got a house in Carter Estates that's received a letter, and we've got a house in Cockamie Village that's received a letter, we tore down a house down here on Foothill Road that received a letter that never complied, we destroyed that house at the expense of the city, and there's a letter that's been sent over here on 118 on the east side of town, and I think if somebody, you know, feels like that they're being mistreated and they see other property, they can come fill out the community action form that we're, that I was talking about, and make us aware that there's a house that maybe we missed.
Well, add to what Councilman Hallmark was saying, I think the issue that he's addressing is a 253 here with a local business owner who owns rental property, there's three houses right here close together across the street, and one of them looks fine, hundred or two, like middle of grass cutting, and there's a fourth one there that's in worse shape than all the other three put together, it didn't receive one, that's the problem with that.
I see where that'd be at.
That's the problem with the business owner that he's having, and to add to what he was saying, you know, unless we're going to address everyone, you know, don't need to address anybody.
I agree with that, a hundred percent, I agree with that. And now you've got me trying to think which that, what that fourth house is that I picked.
Well, that, that might be what we need to do.
There's a house up there, in that same area, there's a house that's vacated, that's been abandoned for a while, that's tied up in, in an estate tour, we got a house over here that received a letter on Community Street last year, and they had it cleaned up, but it's backgroved. they had it cleaned up, but it's backgroved up again, and it's tied up in an estate. A lot of times, there's two houses there, matter of fact, both those houses are tied up, and I had that discussion with Sandy this morning, we were talking about it, uh, you know, that the letters just don't have to, we, we've been, as a matter of fact, there's a, a piece of property that we've, you know, we've got, we've had somebody speak last council meeting on a piece of property, uh, that's, the thirty days is up. So, now we're at the point where we got to do, what we gotta do, we, that, that cost the thirty days is up, and that, that's where it goes before judge. I think that we're making every effort not to pick and choose particular ones. I think that it, a lot of times, when somebody gets a letter, they automatically get upset. I mean, it's what it is. I mean, if the property is, is kind of an eyesore or whatever, it, it, I don't think that nobody's picking and choosing to pick on nobody. But I agree, I agree with you, it needs to be a hundred percent everybody, and I think we're making an effort to try to get to them all.
Well, it might be better then if he makes a list and then we're gonna get the list.
I actually have a list.
She got a list.
I do, I do have a list, so I can probably answer the other question too.
Well, I, I feel like all of the council members.
We're gonna print five of them.
And that would be great, because we do have a bad problem in this, I mean, in this area here. I mean, we do need people to, to get on board with helping us clean up their property. So, yes, it's, it's a, it's a bad problem, but the one house that didn't get the letter is because that man was at home and Ralph talked to him. So.
Well, I mean.
He did get a notice, and Ralph usually tells me when he gives people a notice and then when he talks to people, and so, but I'm glad to give y'all the printout that we have on everybody's property that gets one.
That's just like the road building, I gave you the list of all the city's streets, and we go by and one to ten, we'll know the next time. I mean, I, I think that's a great idea.
It's a lot easier to talk to people, but, I mean, I know I signed up to be the city captain, but I didn't sign that people call and jump all over me and not know nothing about it. I mean, it's, you know, you build in and you knew what was going on, and then, you know, you have people that you walk out of the restaurant, they jump all over you, you know, and, and, and I go by my personal staff and look at their, look at their place, and it don't look near you, dad, there's a lot of other ones, and I'm thinking, you know, what, what's the deal here? I mean, if we're, if this one ain't gonna clean his up, then don't be handling this one. I mean, if we're gonna do it, let's do it, let's, let's do all of them. Let's don't just do, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that nobody's picking who they're putting them on. I'm just saying, they might miss one. He, uh, he might miss one that we, one of us might see that we need to put on that list. And it be, it, it needs to be all one hundred percent. I mean.
We're all open for options, whatever we can do.
Well, just this week, I took six to you, just this week.
And the letter states for them to call CD Hall, you know, I hate that y'all are getting phone calls, cause our number's on there for them to call, so, um.
Well, I'm just saying, I want, I'd just like to see it done at one hundred percent. That's all I got.
You got anything, listen? Tina? Make sure I'm not, send it to someone else, maybe another.
Sidehog? Sidehog?
Yeah, yeah. Over business, we, you know, agreed to purchase that John Deere sidehog from the state, we need to, I need to ask the council to let us put the other one on surplus, to surplus the other tractor and put it on gov deals and run it to paper like we do. With our surplus, I need to ask the council to put that tractor on, uh, gov deal.
Did we purchase the other one?
Ford, what's that tractor? That one sidehog on, what is it?
It went through seven piles, it's Ford.
I thought it was, if, if it is, it is the Ford, it.
Yes, it is, it is a Ford. I, I can't remember the exact size of it, though.
What is it?
Work. Work, or, what's it work?
Oh.
Is it gonna be working, does he need to keep it, use both at one time? Is what I'm trying to get to.
We've got enough operator, we got enough operators to use both of them at the same time.
So, what name?
We have enough operators to use that tractor at the same time, we use that other tractor. I'm kinda thinking.
Yeah, yes, sir, yes, sir, it's, it's pretty nice.
And these two is old cabin trucking, yeah.
Please, Doc, it's got about, what, about three thousand dollars on it, it's pretty good shape, isn't it? Yeah, I mean, you're giving that money out of it, did you?
That's worth it, yeah. I'm good with, let me, I get mine, I take pictures of putting them gov deals, surplus, pull it on in the paper too, Mike, and I'll do another.
Well, now, if you put on gov deals and you get a bid, you're operating, you get a higher bid from the newspaper.
Well, how about putting it in the paper and advertise that if you're interested, go to govdeals.com?
Okay.
That'll take care of that problem, cause a lot of times people, we run into that, a lot of times people don't know what gov deals is, and, and, you know, word of mouth it gets out, but if we put it in there that way, people come and say, well, what is that? You know, it's, it's a good website for, uh, the stuff, stuff brings, brings the top dollar on that site. We've seen that, that wreck pickup that we had that I didn't figure that we ever, you know, versus what we've always done in the past before, done gov deals, and stuff went scrap price pretty much and didn't bring anything else. But yeah, let's, let's advertise it that way. We want the minimum bid on it, you want me to try to get some ideas on what that, uh, we'd set the minimum bid on it, just, just, uh, we'll do that and we'll get an idea.
I'm supposed to meet with Rob tomorrow to get pictures and specs, so I can give you the next few days, try to get a dollar amount we need to.
We've got, I mean, I've talked a little bit with Rob today, he's having a little bit of issue about being able to purchase fuel for tractors down here, you know, with the company that received the bid package, it's good from September to September, I think it is. They've stopped him from buying fuel down here for whatever reason, I don't really, I don't think really give a reason to why, but they, they told him he needs to go to the truck stop or go on the other side of town. Rob says inconvenience to drive the tractor, um, to, dip up, up to truck stop, especially if you need fuel if you don't need it. I'm, I'm just, I don't know if the council's okay if I let him go ahead to buy fuel somewhere closer to the tractor. I think it has a problem sometimes, the cord not working there.
Sir?
I think, I think it has a problem sometimes, the cord not working.
Mayor, if I may say something, over here at Sherman Station with these garbage trucks, sometimes it's hard to get in and out of there, and when we was getting it down here maxes, you know, we'd just go in, just get right out, no problem. Uh, a lot of times, we just would fuel up there and head out to West Jefferson, or now we're having them go out of our way to get fuel in the garbage trucks also, you know, to run. It's taking longer.
We have.
Are they under contract?
It's just a bid, but it's, uh, it's, we looked over, the, the way the bid package reads, it, uh, got some, it's got some leeway of things, it's not like, like it's supposed to be.
Why is the cord not, I don't, I don't believe in that either, so, I mean, can they not get us, assign us another cord?
Their officers are in the department.
So, one of them, he owns one of them by the big set, that, that Chevron on that bird.
I don't have, I don't have a cord.
Is he, it's just good, we have to bid, he owns a few, two hundred dollar less than you should fix that.
I think I can really, separate from here, but look, look, about West Alabama, we're there, we're, we're selling, we're, we're, most of the cars, stores around here, he only had to make them the car.
So, when it is, it doesn't work.
My recommendation there is to, you know, to get it to wherever, get it to where it's gonna be, uh, easier for them and, you know, not to worry they're quitting out, going up and down the road or whatever, but you know, and then rebid it again, give somebody else an opportunity to, to pick it up.
When the time comes back to rebid, or Todd might make changes to the bid package or whatever, you know, we got issues, we, he can correct it, I just.
I don't understand if he's got from September to September, how he could just drop it if it's under contract.
Cause did it say that they could buy anywhere they wanted to, long as it's with that company? Do you know, do you mind? I mean, cause I think that was the understanding they had, that buying it through, the one that got the bid, they could buy it in their store, but now all of a sudden that's changed, so they kind of make it, know on what their, if it's under contract.
We, you know, most times, like, it's like on gov deals, I mean, the bid, we put it out for bid, we reserve the rights to use it.
Yeah.
Maybe let everybody else use the same.
Well, they, they bid it for, you said September to September now, so they're, they're not gonna sell it anymore.
But it's that one location. They don't let it work down at that location.
Which location is another one, by the way?
The one they do downtown, so they're, they're, they want to do that, he wants to. Well, it's just so inconvenient for him because they don't.
No, no, why did he not tell it there?
Oh, we don't know.
Why does he not let us manage?
They never call back.
I think it's an issue where they provide fuel there, but maybe they don't own the store or something, it's not technically theirs, and there's, you know, an issue that's come up against.
But it's been a constant, I don't, we've changed, the locations have changed several times during this year period. We've got notices, Mike can tell you, several times during this year, trying to keep the guys up, they, okay, you can buy here today, but you can't anymore, or it's, it's been a mess.
But, but, if I'm not mistaken, if I'm not mistaken. Our bid is written, the bid we asked them to respond to, that they had to have at least one location in the city, is all we had to have, is at least one location, that's kind of what I had. Yeah, it needs to be, and I, we didn't foresee, at the time, we thought that this was a good deal for us because they were the lowest bidder, plus they had lots of locations, so I mean, it sounded good, but, uh.
The only location, Todd, that they listed on their bid was the one twenty-nine exit, which is their only twenty-four hour. But, but they don't provide diesel, ethanol, non-ethanol, all three at every location, and, and so that.
The successful bidder must provide the city with the physical locations which the city vehicles shall be authorized to use, purchase each of the above fuel products, at least one of which must be open in fuel pumps, operable twenty-four hours a day, seven days per week, and able to accommodate all city vehicles. And, um, therefore, the locations they listed. The only location, this is, this is, the Midstate Petroleum, the only location he listed was seven, seventy-sixteen Highway one twenty-nine, Winfield, Alabama, three five five nine four, the only location he listed. So, the others were basically just a convenience for us, and, and as long as he's got that one location listed, and that's a vital process.
He's, he's, he's done his part of the deal. He done, he done what he should. Just need to take that into account.
But with that being said, can Ronnie want to like to purchase this somewhere else, anything?
Cause we wanted to bid, we, we accepted the bid, we wanted to bid to Mac based on that price, and he was clearly listed, he, he clearly advised us that the only location that was part of it was this one twenty-nine location. And as long as that one twenty-nine location, he did advise about a bid and about acceptance. So, I think we're gonna have to.
I think they're just gonna be the.
We accepted this bid.
Cause it's not, he tried to use it, it's just not working fine. I thought that they could go it back.
I understand what you're saying, but the problem is, his bid right here, he gave us one twenty-nine, and one twenty-nine's available. It's the other one closer is not available. So, as long as one twenty-nine's available, we're, we're, we're one twenty-nine. If it's not, not ethanol.
But he had a different option, Mike, up until just.
We, we've been able to go to four different stations. Even the one was all that you listed on bid, and the other three are more convenient, but they're not listed on the bid.
So, so one twenty-nine doesn't have non-ethanol?
No. No, that's the issue last year. Remember, we talked a bit about, the, only one location had non-ethanol.
Right here is the, what first they do, that's the list that they give us. The first of the things was, was fuel. That was first.
Field time, I don't think, actually. Purchased from them.
I think Ronnie did.
That's accurate, but, but where are we buying, so he doesn't have a location where he's buying non-ethanol?
The only, the only location for non-ethanol is the Chevron out by Burgess Transmission, okay? The only department, unless it's changed, the only department that uses non-ethanol has been the park. And to begin with, we had to do a ticket purchase, we had to sign a ticket out there instead of the fuel card, and then eventually they got fuel cards that they said we could use out of that station for the non-ethanol.
But, we have, we have a location that we can use, the billing system and buy non-ethanol fuel. Right?
Yeah, during daytime hours, which pretty much what we need.
The issue is, I understand it is for the city, for, for the, is it for the, well, non-ethanol petroleum, but, but fuel, diesel fuel.
For the street department, for diesel.
Diesel fuel, off-road diesel. The only place y'all can get that is on one twenty-nine now?
Or, or out of Chevron.
Out of here, uh.
By the Midstate Bank.
You can get off-road diesel at that location? You can get off-road diesel at that location?
No, not off-road, it's just regular diesel.
We put, on route, which one, the tractors and stuff? But then we made it off-road, okay. That makes sense. So, but the, the, so the issue is, we were, we were buying our fuel right here at Max. It was just a lot easier. But now we can't use that one anymore, we either gotta go Chevron or one twenty-nine.
Yes. I, I have asked yesterday, when I spoke to the lady at Midstates, about this issue. I said, if you remember, we, we did a ticket system out at Ears Chevron for non-ethanol. I said, even if we could do a ticket system where the employee signs a ticket showing how much they bought. And we keep a copy, they bring it to Debbie. And the, the store sends a copy to Midstates. If for some reason, we can't do a fuel card and purchase diesel, are there other options that would still let us purchase diesel at Max's minute mark? And he was supposed to meet with, um, Richard, I believe is his name, that's the owner or higher up. We'll see what we might could work out. I, I've not heard back today from him.
Well, what I understand, why can't we just buy a fuel card and go everywhere we want to and buy gas? That's why we, where I work is we have a fuel card, you can go to any station you want to, and then the worker, you buy gas and I'll go back to the company, and that's the problem solved. And you don't worry about bidding, you don't worry about any of that.
You go out to Midstates or Moores or whoever.
Yeah, it's just a fuel card, you can't buy nothing on it but fuel.
Yeah, do you get a bid price?
But the, but the prices, but the prices, it's whatever the company charges.
Yeah, you got.
Yeah, you, you don't, we don't have a set price.
You don't bid, it's a set price.
It's a convenience.
Yeah, that's only issue there. There's a violation.
Well, you know, the, the, the invoice isn't, was not a violation to be at. Technically, if, you know, maybe you signed the ticket, wasn't, wasn't a violation to be at. It fit that this bid was. Yeah, cause it just said the successful bidder shall be required to provide the city with, uh, provide a system to track and record all the city's fuel purchases during the term of the bid. Didn't say it had to be a card or whatever, it said you got to track it. So, you know.
I've asked if, Mike said, if that system could be used here.
I mean, now this is only the second year we bid it. And third, this third year we bid it, okay? So, we need to, we need to tweak it a little bit before we do it again. Make sure we address these concerns that we've had. Maybe even put in there that if, 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 at any point in time, uh, during, during the bid, something becomes unavailable, that we reserve the right to, uh, go to the next lowest bidder on that product. Put some language like that in there to, to address it in the future. Didn't we, didn't we use tank, tank over there that we could use for a seat?
It was buried, and then we got the regulations were so high.
Okay, got to. It was just cheaper just let somebody else store it and us buy it from them that wants to store it ourselves?
Yeah, we talked about that the other day with Rob, then, you know, above the ground, not near as, not near the issue as is in the ground. Tank in the ground, that's been a worry.
I think it's hard to keep track of who got fuel out of that tank too, because you didn't have each individual with a card. It's hard to keep up with who was getting fuel, what department, what individual.
Well, that was back before they got swap cards and things, now they're white today now.
The gas district's got a setup of, of getting them installed.
Means he don't own any pumps no more, I mean, that. Well, he owns the pumps, he still wants you, he, you can still buy, he don't own the pumps. You know?
It's like, if you own a station, and I said, you can get it, you got to pay me for the gas. And you can do where you want to.
Yeah, yeah, they, so he just look up, he just still, he has, make sure anything, they're not, they're not agreeing to go buy it. Okay, I got you. Makes the answer.
Uh, we'll, we'll, we got two months left, probably, June is about over, and we got August and, uh, July and August, then we put it out for bid.
Yeah, new, new bid year would start October one.
We're a little, a little closer to, I think, the way that all that's worded and different things are, for convenience and how far we've got to go to get it.
Maybe what I'll do is, I've got this bid, these bid specs, I'll, I'll, I'll provide those with all the department heads, to all the department heads, and let them look at it and address the concerns that they've had, the way it was working. We need to tweak it a little bit so that we can, you know, keep this from happening, we will, but.
Uh, I, I, I don't think I, uh, I don't think I've forgotten nothing else. That, I need to ask for a motion to, uh, pay the council payable. I might go back to, I'm, I'm, we're gonna have to sit and wait.
Makes sense.
So. All in favor? All right, oh, that's, that's all, that's all the business we're gonna have tonight to act on. We're gonna need to go into Xavier's session, I need to ask for a motion to go into session with this stuff of business. Thank you, guys.